I'm gonna call this meeting to order at 5:32 PM on August 1st. Mr. Russey, we have a study session, correct?
We do.
We made it.
Be back, okay. I think we're good to go now, sorry about that. Shall I do roll call?
Please, Mr. Russey, roll call.
Councilmember Allen. Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Pasapic.
Cash shall come to town. But that's okay, don't worry about it, you'll get it right.
I'll try and get yours right after.
How about just cash?
Trying to get them right. Mayor Pro Tim Crossby.
Here.
Mayor Peck.
Here.
All right. In a minute, so we are here for a study session and just to remind the council and number of members of the audience, study session is not agenda for action to be taken, it's just to provide council and the community with information on the subject matter. And the item that you'll be hearing about today is the Laverne Wilderness Area Management Plan. The reason we're bringing this over to you, and in a minute Candace Polk will come up and give you the presentation because she has been the lead on this project. This project has been very lengthy in time, it's had a couple of pauses in the middle. And before we bring it back for the final hearing of the environmental, we thought it was appropriate to familiarize the council as well as the public with the work that's been done to this point and the project, see if there are any questions that you otherwise have that we need to go back and do some additional research before we bring it back for a full public hearing for consideration and as council. Okay, with that, I will turn it over to Candace.
Good evening, Ms. Polk.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. So as you know, we're here to talk about the Laverne Wilderness Area Management Plan. And this all started back in 2007. Due to the lack of funding to complete an environmental impact report, sorry, J.R., it's like, I forgot. So due to the lack of funding to complete an environmental impact report, the plan was delayed until about 2015. The Planning Commission reviewed the plan and the EIR in 2019, which I'll talk about more in detail later. But because of other community issues that came up about at that time, including large development projects, COVID-19, and the project was put on hold again. Therefore, because there are some city, new city council members that may not be aware of this proposed plan and the work that has been completed since 2007, staff felt that it was necessary to have this study session to discuss the plan before going straight to city council public hearing to adopt. So going back to what triggered this plan was in 2006 when the city acquired 208 acres through state grant funds with cooperation from the county, the Trust for Public Land, and the Laverne Land Conservancy. That 208 acres was combined with 150 acres that were referred in own subsidy to create the open space reserve of 358 acres, which is what we refer to now as the wilderness area. The Wilderness Area Management Plan includes selective habitat enhancement actions, the resolution of public safety hazards, the opportunities for limited controlled public access as part of the city's responsibility for this wilderness area. So on this next slide, you can see the map of the area that we're talking about. Monterey is the street directly adjacent to it, just above Marshall Canyon. The yellow line is the project location, the city boundary is the black line. The green highlighted area is the national forest, and then the San Gabriel Mountains, obviously. Next slide. So like I said in the intro, in 2007, we began planning process for the wilderness area. In October of 2008, a draft management plan was created that outlined recommendations for habitat resource enhancement and public safety actions and improved public access. EIRs are very costly and due to the lack of funds at that time to complete one, the city elected to postpone any action at that time. So then in 2015, staff presented an overview of the management plan, findings, the cost for improvement, and recommended next steps at a city council workshop. City council directed staff to prepare an RFP for the project outlining an update of the plan and the EIR. Slide. Soon after, in 2016, a consultant was hired to prepare the plan and begin the environmental process. Between October of 2018 and April of 2019, the Planning Commission conducted several meetings and additional information was requested. Feedback was received from residents and other state agencies at that time. Some residents shared comments regarding opening up the public access to connect to a larger trail system such as Sunset Motor Ridge Trail. Staff and Laverne Land Conservancy at that time met with the U.S. Department of Agriculture Forest Service and were told in writing that portions of the wilderness area fall within the experimental forest. The Sunset Motor Ridge Trail is identified by the Forest Service as an administrative road used for management of the forest and public access to this trail is not consistent with the current management. So unfortunately, the Forest Service couldn't support any new trail connections that encouraged access through the experimental forest area. Next slide. At the meeting in April of 2019, the Planning Commission recommended approval of a two-phase plan to the city council. Phase one consisted of maintenance, security, fuel modification, planting, and protecting the wilderness area. Phase two included the development of a one-mile loop trail and increased public access to the area. Conditions were also added that if there was ever desire for phase two to move forward, an update to the EIR may be necessary, a public workshop, and a city council approval would ultimately be required to ensure that phase two will only move forward with proper notification to the residents and ultimately a vote by the council. So the next steps in this process are, we would schedule the plan and the environmental impact report for city council consideration and possibly a meeting on September 16th. And in August, prior to the hearing, staff would notify about 500 adjacent residents and all other interested parties, letting them know about the meeting and the public hearing to that they are welcome to attend. And that concludes the presentation, so if you have any questions for me, I'm available with staff. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Candace, I'd just like to add a couple pieces to that that make phase one important. Coupled with the need for the, to determine the public access or not was also the issue that was our weed abatement activities that we were doing and had historically been done on all that southern finger of the project that is just behind Monterey and adjacent to the San Dimas project. We were getting some pushback from the state, so we needed to put together a management plan so that we could codify where our activities were, so we could support an application to move forward with those on a regular basis. So that also prompted our need to have that done. And that's why it's broken up into these two phases. The phase one is really about ensuring we continue those practices for the safety of the homes that are adjacent to that southern finger of the property. And then phase two would be kind of that added for later on. So that's kind of distinction that the Planning Commission as well as then we would be bringing forward for council consideration.
What's the state's view of this project? They funded a huge portion of the cost to acquire them, and it seems like it's been at albatross ever since. Is the state looking for us to have access onto that property, or are they indifferent about that?
Actually, that question was asked during the process, I think Candace has some information.
Yes, so stipulation of the grant funding was that public access was required. We did go into even further depth on that question and we found switchback trails actually from San Dimas Canyon Road. And we pointed out that there's that, technically there's access from that point. And the state gave us a letter that says that that's sufficient for a grant as to call that public access. Because it's not restricted.
But we have trails that connect from the switchbacks to this particular property?
It leads back down to the property, yes. I don't know if you can actually exit to anywhere, I don't know.
So that would be part of, we were to do a more nature trail would be that connection. There's no constructed or developed trail that fall anywhere on the property at this time. But there's nothing that has, that the state is saying that we have to do anything more than is there right now to satisfy that condition of the grant line.
Just, before we leave. This has been kind of going on for some time, when I got off council in 2015 and we were on the Planning Commission before that. And it was a real interesting subject, I'll just leave it at that because you have all these properties that are surrounding that that are concerned about foot traffic. And my big question is though, this money was given to us a long time ago to purchase that property. Are we in jeopardy whatsoever of losing that and having to pay them back? Because that's really the biggest thing to talk about now is, at some point, there has to be either access or we give back, is that correct?
Yes, and we need to have some sort of plan in place.
Which we've kind of been, will they give us some grace period because of the fact of, okay?
I think we've, I think we've used that.
I could say we probably have. I mean, this goes back to 2007?
Yeah, yeah.
So, I mean, I think the biggest thing is the fact that the residents at the time were very concerned, number one. Number two, now that because of the fact where it is, we have a real fire danger right now of anyone going into that area. That's number two. And number three, it's inhospitable, I guess I would say, area. But the point is though, is that we do have this thing, a grant. And we've done some environmentals, but not, we need to redo those because those are, no, they stand.
According to the consultant.
They stand in place.
A little tweaking, but nothing major.
So really, we're kind of out of time.
If we want to still use the EIR and not pay for another one, yes.
Mr. Crossby.
Thank you, but you just stated because of the access point, we don't need currently new more access points to use the grant or have to pay back the grant because there is an access point off of San Dimas Canyon on the west side of this property. But it does not come down through, all the way down to where that finger down to like.
Correct.
Where we, Gold Springs. But that doesn't violate what the grant, what the state told us that you need access to it.
Correct, we're still obligated to adopt a plan, but that's the public access aspect. If, until, when, if phase two ever happens, that's fine until then.
Is there a mandate that phase two has to happen by a certain point?
No, there is a, the wilderness, or I'm sorry, the conservancy, Laverne Land Conservancy, they requested that a condition be added that we revisit it in.
I think 24 months.
I want to say two years.
Of when we adopted.
That council revisits it, just to see if maybe there's new residents or something changes to where they may support it. Because at the time, it wasn't supported.
No, I don't believe it's supported right now.
Yeah.
And though we, if the residents do not support that, we are still fine with the access that is there right now.
Correct.
Councilmember Allen.
So I was just gonna add a little bit of background and history to that too, because I was on the Planning Commission when this was being discussed. And so I think that does accurately represent the biggest issue was our concern with public access. Because if we didn't have public access, then we were in danger of having to pay back the funds. And it was a significant amount of money. So from what I'm hearing from you, and I want to be clear, that we're okay right now with public access, that qualifies. Phase two, there's no implementation period, so this is the plan, a phase one and a phase two approach. There is no time period that is required to enact phase two. However, there are outside groups that may push us to enact a timeline. Are we required to enact that timeline?
I believe your only obligation would be to revisit it and talk about it as a council and at that time approve phase two or not.
And just to clarify, that's not necessarily something that's being imposed by the state. That's something that was a recommendation of the Planning Commission and it's up to the council to adopt it, but that was at the request of the land conservancy, not of any state agency.
Huge danger.
And I know that the agenda was put out obviously last week for this study session. Has there been any discussion or any comments from residents about this, as it's coming back up on the radar?
Not directed towards staff.
Okay. And so the plan for this would be then to get the public notice out, at which point then we would anticipate obviously some comments and votes coming and then have this up for vote by our mid-September meeting.
Yes.
Thank you.
So, phase one is intact. We just never gone to phase two. Which, and I must say that I must congratulate the conservancy, this was a gift of love and I know that they wanted to conserve our space, which is great to conserve our natural space. But then again, it's another issue to have people coming up and down. And I know there's a bone of contention on that trail, it was kind of iffy, the one from San Dimas, but you know, but anyway, it is a trail. It's an active trail. So basically, we're gonna bring it, we're gonna send it out to the residents again and say, hey, here we go. And look at it again. But so if we never go to phase two, but we stay on phase one, we have, there's no risk of losing the money?
No.
So, we bring it up to the residents again, Mr. Russey.
Sorry, go ahead and finish your thought.
I just, that's the most important thing, so, and then basically let the residents speak and see what they'll say about that area again.
And just to be clear, we have to codify phase one. Phase one is identified in the recommendations. We are still practicing under, I'll call it temporary applications for weed abatement, but we would like to have something that's more permanent. And this document helps us to get those weed abatement activities to, and more not having to do these interim applications because they are permanent. So you will have to at least approve that piece and ideally phase one and phase two. But just point out that hasn't been approved formally yet.
So it'd be important for phase one to make sure we do our modification, which is so important in that area that that's the fire hazard. Mr. Johnson.
So, we have now access to that property from that switchback from San Dimas. So technically, residents or anybody can use that to access this particular piece of property. And they're not, nobody's being barred from that property.
Correct.
What's our liability associated with that?
In what manner, I'm not understanding.
Well, I mean, technically, with the trail that's there, it does allow access to this particular piece of property for anybody with whatever intention they have. But yet, we're not really securing that property at all or monitoring that property. We're only, you know, we're hoping to residents to make a call if there's something going on on that property.
Do we have cameras, excuse me, Mr. Johnson, do we have cameras on that property on the upper edge?
We do not have any improvements anywhere on it. So it is considered wilderness area, so it is really unprotected, unmonitored, and is left to natural habitats. So there's, it's not considered an active part that we have the same level of exposure that we would under those types of circumstances.
But the access to that property is basically, is it bridged? And also through Golden Hills State? And also Simison property? That's locked down?
Right.
So the only one is through San Dimas basically, because we, everything else is pretty much.
Locked, yeah.
Locked down, okay. Cash, do you have any?
No, I mean, Mayor, I'd like, definitely can learn more about it in the 30-minute brief, just to grasp everything that guys have gone through since 2015 now, just to catch up on, and just to hear the pros and cons and everything else, just to figure it out and make a course of action. I'm just looking at the Army guys, so we look at terrain. I understand exactly where I can get to there, so I don't know, is fire trails matter or does that count? Fire trail access?
Sure.
It's access.
It's access.
With a camel?
Yeah, he's going on a bike that goes.
He's going on bikes though.
A camel or a whole train vehicle, which you're not supposed to have out there anymore, so.
Unless it's electric, I guess, but yeah, go by, I just need more information.
So really, we're going to, basically, we're gonna bring back the residents, we're gonna notify them and have a discussion.
And obviously, because of the complexities, we wanted to bring this back to you all first to kind of raise your awareness so you weren't capturing all this information or having to read it in a staff report and at least have an opportunity to ask some of these particular questions in advance of having a public hearing. So we'll be happy to, if there are additional pieces of information to your question directly about if there's any liability from that access, we can certainly ask the authority to have those prepared for our next meeting as well.
Yeah, I mean, because if there is public access and there are people that are using it, no matter how they got onto the property, it's still a property that can be accessed and used.
14 years ago. And we're still doing it, okay?
So I think maybe for the benefit of the new council members and maybe just as a refresher for those who did sit on the commission with me and the mayor, I don't want to, I remember the books, they were very big, but maybe the minutes or something from each of those, you know, planning commission meetings.
Yeah, I'll have all of those as attachments for you.
Perfect, thank you.
So we'll bring it back, thank you. I think we're gonna open up for public comment right now, if anybody wishes to have public comment on this item, please feel free to.
I think I remember this, and I walked some of the houses on Monterey and they were pissed, you know, it's just like.
No, really, what do you mean?
And I kind of understood where they were at because the property behind Monterey is pretty well open. You know, there's not like a lot of trees right there, but it's pretty well open and you could see everybody walking by. And they did not want people back there, and I don't blame them. In this environment now, I mean, there's a lot of break-ins, that's an easy break-in right there. So I really understand how they feel, and I don't think they're gonna go for it. You guys better make sure they know about this, because they're gonna blow up if it happens and they don't know about it. And they have a beautiful property there, but it's pretty, the ones I saw was pretty, it's not like, you know, like the ones behind Salome, you just walk and there's a bunch of trees and you can't see anything. I mean, they can see in their yards, they can see in their house, there's no fencing there. So it's a problem if you start getting people there, and we don't need any fires up there. Don't want to go through that again.
No.
Thank you.
I think we're going to post it to over 500 residents, is that not correct?
Yeah, everybody that is immediately adjacent, plus there are those who have been interested in the project from the beginning that come to, have number roughly 500.
Ms. Barry. You're almost right on that property. On Streetaway.
Yeah, so I do have a few questions. First of all, on that, 500 homes or whatever, and those that are adjacent. Can we specify how far or how close is that group of houses gonna be? Are we, I mean, like, I'm concerned that it's gonna be just the immediate, you know. How far are we gonna go? How many houses, how far?
Candace, what is the distance?
We're legally required to notice 300 feet from the actual area. We did, we did go further.
Can I suggest much further? 300 feet, I mean, when you're thinking about potential for fire danger and potential for security issues, I would suggest going much further than that. Because if you really want to have public input, the public needs to know. And, you know, I mean, even three, four blocks from there, they're gonna be severely impacted potentially. Just got a couple of questions. One, the grant money, what happened to that? What was it used for, or has it been used?
The acquisition.
Acquisition, okay.
Yeah, purchase.
And then one other thing, just a totally side note. When you're sitting over here, I don't know where this comes out, maybe it's over there somewhere, but there are speakers over there and we're not hearing much of anything over there.
Can you hear us?
I can hear you.
But not that.
I can hear you at all, I don't know.
I've heard complaints about that mic, that it's, for some reason, it's not.
But if those speakers can be used somehow, because when I was sitting right next to Anna there, the only thing I heard from this mic was what you hear in the room. So it's pretty quiet, and even from all those zooms we did, this was hard to hear. So I don't know if there's a way to adjust that or make it go out there.
On a playback, can you hear it on a playback, I hear it's not very good.
Yeah, not very well. Most of you, pretty good, so, anyway, that's it.
Thank you. Ms. Bocham.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Two things, one, all of the attachments to all of the things that pertain to this agenda item should have been attached to today's agenda. There is nothing that informs anybody who cares about this topic for them to research and learn about it. Because I guarantee you, there's no videos on the city's website right now that go to the Planning Commission back at 2015. Number one. Number two, what is the alternative if phase two is not achieved, regardless if there's a deadline or not? What is the alternative, are there other alternatives even being discussed? You know, reopening from another location other than the San Dimas entrance? You know, there's nothing being discussed, I mean, this is supposed to be more like a study. I mean, this is supposed to be more like a study session, I guess, because it's going to be brought back to another time. But we're not, we're not proposing solutions, I guess, is what I'm looking for. Looking to you as my council to provide alternative solutions, and I'm not hearing that. And I don't know if that's because you're waiting to hear from the public that surrounds those, that area and wait to present them at that time, I don't know, but I, I'm curious to know what that would be. And worst case scenario, if that money has to be returned, is that factored into the budget for the city? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bocham. Anyone else?
I've got one more question in regards to the map that we're seeing.
You want to go, we finish our public comment and we'll turn back out. Do we have anybody on the, we have Sean Igoe on the phone, I don't think he has any questions. Jennifer, Simison.
I have one question that goes way back to the purchasing of it. I thought they purchased it and then we were just the overseers to make sure it was okay. I didn't, we didn't get the money and then buy it. I thought they bought it and they were looking for someone to manage it, and our city said we would. So I don't think, just from back in 200, 2000 years, whatever, in 2000, I think it was just that they needed a city, because LA County said they didn't want it because they didn't want to take over it. And so City of Liverance said, oh, hey, this, let's, we'll get, you know, get rid of the future, like the
And to clarify, they, you mean the state?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure that
There's a lot of they's.
Yeah.
That's a big they.
And I've always been, you know, when people say, oh, we're going to have to pay back the money, I think we're going to say, give it to someone else to manage. I think that is my theory, is we're saying we're done, it's been an albatross, we're done hassling with it, give it to someone else. I don't think we got money to buy it, I think. But I don't know, but I remember way back when we were first working on this, I don't think that we would owe money back. But maybe we could find out. Because I don't think we were
I think we'll clarify that.
Yeah.
Your memory is pretty good. Yeah. All the time. Anyone else? Who had to post public comment, Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, but this property has just been a problem from the beginning, even from the original concept. Because we never really wanted to open it up for public use, but that was a condition of the grant that was used to acquire the money. And yeah, the county didn't want to have anything to do with it, the Forest Service doesn't want to have anything to do with it. I guess one other question that I have in the map that we're seeing is the project area or the project location is in yellow. And there's a lot of property here that's not part of that chunk of land that was purchased. So I'm just wondering where all of this got tied up to the property that the Land Conservancy purchased that we took over. Because the project area listed here is much larger than the property that was acquired.
And that was my next question, what was the property that was acquired? And what was the property that, it says in the briefing was combined together? So what was the one piece that was acquired and then what's the, that the whole?
And I will let Candace correct me if I'm wrong in that, but I believe the direction from council when we went down, put the Wilderness Plan together and then moved forward was we had this other piece and this piece, and it just made sense to merge them together as part of the Wilderness Plan. And if it was anything that was part of the grant that required it, we just chose if we were going to go through this effort to bring the pieces together. Now, as far as, we'll go through several of the questions. The purchase, Jennifer, you're generally correct that we never, we didn't get the money to get it. The transaction was happening kind of independent of us, the last minute, and the county was going to be the hold the land. They moved out at the last minute, the city inserted itself, and no good deed goes unpunished, and here we are today. So we became the owners of this land or the responsible part, but we did not get the money. We clarified that there is no, there is no threat at this point of saying if you do not approve Phase Two, you have to pay the money back. That is not the case. This is not something that is being imposed upon us. It is something that is being requested, that Phase Two, by individuals that are part of the Land Conservancy itself that went through the process of working to acquire this land for the intention of hopefully coming up with public access. But there is nothing that is requiring, if you've got something to discuss.
I do, and I just came to my brain remembering that Planning Commission meeting. Yes, the majority of the residents that were there at that meeting were opposed to this one mile loop trail with Phase Two aspect. But absent of us spending more money to revise the plan and take it out altogether, the direction was to do the Space Two that required this other action by the council after this adoption that would have to happen for it to be implemented, because it was pretty clear from the residents, the majority of them, that they were opposed to the loop trail. We originally intended that to meet that criteria for public access, but later through that process, when we found out that the San Dimas Canyon Trail met the requirement, it really didn't, it was no longer necessary. So staff wasn't a proponent for that Phase Two, it was already simply in the plan. And so by conditioning this, this other action that the council would take, really made it to where nobody has expectations that Phase Two would ever come to play. And as the city manager mentioned, we're not at risk of losing those grant elders with the current access that we have. So Phase Two was locked in simply so we weren't spending more money to take it out of the plan that was ready to be adopted at that time. So I just want to update that, so I recall that now after that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Let me just finish the other two questions that came up. As far as alternative phase, so there is no alternative phase that we're really proposing because there's no need to. I'm not suggesting, you know, council wants to proceed with some alternative to public access. I think the public opinion is pretty strong on not, but that certainly can be something council's interest. As far as the items being included, yes, when it comes to a public hearing, everything will be available for the public review because that's when it will be a public hearing. This as a study session was just to familiarize council and the public and remind them of the subject and kind of all these different aspects that we have here today to kind of discuss. So that when it does come forward, it's not coming from this completely stalled position, it's at least got some understanding. Yeah, the only thing I would recommend that in the future, when we have maps, that we actually define that area that was acquired from the Conservancy, so we
I have that map, so yes, I can.
Yes.
So you're going to put that all out?
So we can just have this a separate issue, yeah.
So, so basically, I think the bottom line is that recalling now is Mr. Director Shear and Candace said Phase Two is a no-go. Phase One is absolutely because we have to do fire clearance and a few modifications, so we rotate with that. If it's already in place, the EIR is already in place, we go ahead and have a meeting. But to Ms. Bocham's and also Ms. Berry, I think we need to expand that 500 to, we need to expand that area because you have everything down to basically to Country Club, Birdie, anyone in the new tract. You've got Marshall Canyon, you've got Rusty Canyon, you've got, you know, Golden Hills Estates, you've got Mountain Springs, you've got all those areas that are affected. So it wouldn't hurt us to go ahead and expand that out to a larger, larger area instead of the 500. I think we should go over to 1,000, 1,500, wherever, because one ember, as we all know, will start to fire anyone in the community, so. And we are in a high fire zone, as it says in the map, because it even stated that, so I think we need to do that. But I, and all the information, please, we need to get the information out to the residents to see what it was. Just kind of recapture that information because it's been so long, and it's been kind of a little bit long. But I think it's a place for us to review it and then have some more input from the residents, but it sounds like.
My memory just came back too, as I recall, the biggest people that wanted the trail?
Come on, stay.
Sorry.
We'll let you, we'll let you do this, you're the information guru tonight.
The biggest people that really wanted the trail was a bicycle group. And it was out of town, and we all said, we don't want to climb on it. We wanted to see what it is. So I think that's part of, everyone in town said no, and then the bicycle, that was, they were all over with their shoes on and their bikes.
Again, you're correct.
Yeah, yeah, so that, it wasn't really the townspeople, so we're, I think we're safe.
Okay, so council, do we need any other, I think we've got a direction, so we'll try to get this on the April 16th meeting or September, I mean, September?
September.
We can wait.
No, let's get this, let's get this done, so you'll want to get that set up, so we make sure the staff can wait this one.
We just to clarify, the fuel lot is happening, so I don't want people to freak out.
We are.
Yes, fuel lot is happening, so all this is going to put this in.
The fire marshal's been up there.
Yeah.
Checking that out.
Thank you.
So that's it, I'll be right back. Thank you. We're going to go ahead and turn this meeting at 6:10 and we're going to have a meeting at 6:30, thank you for all the
Now we do. They were telling, oh, you're on the city.